Are we ready? I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors for Monday, November 21st, 2016. Would please rise for the flag salute led by Director Hines, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General counsel, please call the roll.
President Viall.
Here.
Vice President Oshka.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Cobb. Director Hines.
Here.
Director Cobb is on her way, so we won't move to excuse her. Thank you. Some kind of a traffic jam at JBLM. Would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. For all. Item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Excuse me. Item five-one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Tacoma Housing Authority. Amanda, welcome.
Good evening. Hi, good to see you. Good evening Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, directors. This is my pleasure to recognize the November Gold Star Partner. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, and the district and the greater Tacoma community. We know that partners are committed to supporting academic success, the success of the whole child, and their future, which in turn affects the quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone, and in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner. Today, we are recognizing Tacoma Housing Authority, who has taken a progressive approach toward housing by developing the Tacoma Housing Authority's education project, which has two main purposes. It seeks to help children in houses succeed in school and seeks to promote the success of schools servicing low-income students. The project has three main outcomes: to help people succeed, not just as tenants, but also parents, students, wage earners, and builders of assets who can live without assistance and transform family lives; in many cases, this requires school success; create attractive places to live, work, and attend school; and housing dollars not only to house families, but to promote school success and success of schools that serve low-income students. Except for the school district and the public assistant agency, Tacoma Housing Authority serves more low-income children than any other organization in Tacoma. Tacoma Housing Authority houses one out of seven Tacoma Public School students and about one in 4.5 low-income students. Tacoma Housing Authority undertakes this effort in full partnership with the district, Tacoma Community College, and other service providers and funders. Some of their key projects and partnerships that we work with them on are the MacArthur Elementary School Housing Assistance Program, which is shortly going to expand to other schools, the College Savings Account Program for the children of Salashan, the Collegebound Scholarship Enrollment Project, the Children's Book Program, which distributes books, children's books from all Tacoma Public Schools through all Tacoma housing properties, the Tacoma Public Schools Head Start Classroom at the Tacoma Housing Authority Community of Bay Terrace, and the Early Warning Attendance Program for Tacoma Housing Authority school children. And at this time, I would like to invite to recognize and a round of applause for the Executive Director of Tacoma Housing Authority, Mr. Michael Mira, and Commissioner of the Tacoma Housing Authority, Mr. Arthur Banks. Can we give them a hand?
Good evening. Superintendent Santorno and Board Chair Karen Viall and Board. On behalf of the Tacoma Housing Authority, we are pleased to be in partnership with you. The young lady before me took all my bragging points. I will be real short of all those partnerships we have developed over the years, and we have the same goal as you do, to make sure that our students and children are in a safe environment, in a housing environment where they can feel safe, which helps expedite their learning. And we are pleased to be partnered with you on this, and we are looking forward to a greater partnership in the future where we can continue to help our young people succeed and be successful. At this point, I'll let Michael come, who doesn't need notes.
Thank you, Dr. Banks.
I wanted to offer my own thanks.
Thank you.
To Carla and Josh and your wonderful team, to this board, because for all the reasons you just heard, if we can spend a housing dollar to get all those other outcomes, it is a very good use of a housing dollar. And we do this for three reasons. You heard the first one. We want people we house to succeed, not just as tenants, but as parents, students, and wage earners. We want them to have a transforming experience with us. We want that certainly for adults, but emphatically for children, because we do not wish them to need our housing when they grow up, and we count school success as essential to that transformation. Second, we are real estate developers, and we invest enormous amounts of money in communities and neighborhoods in ways that will not pay off, either financially or socially, unless the schools that serve them succeed. And third, we think the school district has a claim on our help. The school district is essential to the welfare of the city of ours, and you are asked to undertake problems that you cannot address on your own. And children who grow up in deep poverty bring challenges to your door that the fanciest classroom with the best-trained teacher cannot overcome alone, and we think we owe you our partnership. And we know from other communities that these kinds of partnerships are not always easy to fashion. And here, I want to thank Carla and the board, because you made it easy in ways that would not have been natural in other places. We are very grateful for that. We look forward to growing this partnership, and when we get it done, I think we'll look back on what a partnership in other communities should look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Arthur, would you and Michael come up, please?
I just wanted to personally thank Reverend Banks and Michael Mira. It has been really a delightful experience, and it has not always been easy. We have had to forge pathways that have not existed before, and those are the hard kinds, when there's no manual written. And probably none of you know it, but Michael and I are pretty much superstars around the country, because, mostly Michael, but I tag on his coattails, because there are big cities all over the U.S. that are trying to follow and to work on some of the same projects we have. So, thank you so much to the Housing Authority and the work you've done and your willingness to step out of the box. It's been amazing, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Item five-two, recognition of Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors for earning two awards. Mr. Bobell.
Thank you, President Viall and members of the board. You know, meeting after meeting and month after month and year after year, you are so devoted to honoring the good work of our staff and our students and our community members, but tonight's pretty cool. We get to honor you. We have two significant reasons to do so. First, in October, the Council of Urban Boards of Education, which is part of the National School Boards Association, honored all of you with its 2016 award for Urban School Board Excellence. The council, representing the largest school districts in the country, honored you for your strategic plan, the goals, the benchmarks, and policy leadership that has improved academic achievement and graduation rates. The council made specific mention of the fact that you did set a bold goal in 2012 to graduate 85% of our students by 2020, and it granted you the award before it knew that you had achieved that goal with the class of 2016. In addition, last Thursday, the Washington State School Directors Association presented you with a 2016 Board of Distinction Award. That award's based on your being accountable and open to the public and seeking divergent perspectives in your decision-making, adopting a collaboratively-developed district plan focused on learning and achievement, and employing and supporting quality teachers, administrators, and other staff in providing for professional development. So I have your group cube award here. We have individual cube awards for you. I also have your individual certificates as a Board of Distinction. On behalf of the employees of Tacoma Public Schools, the people of Tacoma, and especially our students, it's our pleasure to thank you for your leadership, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. As Superintendent Santorno and I and Vice President Oshka were in Miami on October 1st to accept this award, and growing up, I remember my father telling me, "Don't expect to be patted on the head for doing the right thing, but you know what? When you are, it sure feels good." And we have worked and done an amazing amount of things in a short period of time, and it has been such an honor to serve with everyone on this board, and I think we truly are committed. People say sometimes you adopt a slogan, but that every student, every day, each and every one of us here is truly dedicated to that. And we don't get this award for the work that we do. This award came because the work that we do was carried out by Superintendent Santorno and all of the people in this district. The operations and maintenance people are amazing, principals, teachers, everyone who works for the city of Tacoma had a role in making this district, or I'm sorry, back in my old days, for Tacoma Public Schools had a major part in our board winning this award. It is easy to adopt plans, and it's easy to pass policies, but the hard work comes when the superintendent and her staff and everyone knows that they are accountable to us. So it was a pleasure to accept that award on behalf of every person who works for Tacoma Public Schools and all 200 of our partners and our parents, who are here every day to help our kids succeed, and they are succeeding. So thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, great. And we're going to find a nice place to display that award. One thing I didn't mention is that we were prominently featured in the American School Board Journal. We were again this month, and one of the benefits of winning that award is that you are on the front page, so to speak, with school boards for one whole year. So you will see us featured at NISBA, you will see us featured across the country up until next October. So, moving on, thank you. Members wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your input is, pardon me, is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. Pardon me. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments. We have a monitor over there with three minutes. At the end of two minutes, you will have a ding to let you know you have one minute, and then you will have another ding when your time is expired. We have a large number of people signed up to speak tonight, so I would ask you to please honor the time, and if you do go over, I will ask you to stop right then and there. We also have, this is the school district's largest classroom in many respects, and so we ask that people's comments are civil and that we model behavior we'd like to see our kids do. So thank you. With that, I will ask Superintendent Santorno to begin.
The first topic, we have several speakers to speak regarding safety in our schools. I'm going to ask Kimi, I think it's Kimi, is that correct? Say it again. Kimi, I thought so. Kimi Irene Gen, would you come up first, Kimi? And she will be followed by Miguel Smith.
Thank you. Good evening to Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia, as well as the Board of Directors. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unions, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. And then they came for me, but there was no one left to speak for me. I am Kimi Irene Gen. I'm the interim director of Vibrant Schools, and I'm here this evening to talk about safety in our schools. And it's in relationship to both Policy Number 3207, the prohibition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as well as Policy Number 3111, nondiscrimination and equity. Vibrant Schools is a community-based coalition for the advocacy for measurable, broad-based change to apply district-wide strategies that end the achievement gap experienced by students of color and students impacted by poverty, and is represented tonight by members who are compelled to present our coalition's position on the recent election result, as it relates to the backlash and negative harmful fallout that has begun to affect the well-being of an alarming and significant number of our students and their respective families and communities. We are concerned about the safety of our children in our schools. It goes far beyond just bullying. Acts of discrimination resulting from a child's or family's race, gender, religion, culture, and other unique human characteristics is unacceptable. We have an expectation as school board directors that a proactive stance is taken and that the appropriate messaging is sent out to all school staff and that it's implemented right away. This includes having all supervisory and leadership staff members to be responsible for and be held accountable to, informing employees of these policies and the requirements of fostering and maintaining a safe and civil educational environment for all students and staff. We offer commendation to Justina Johnson for recognizing the importance of providing support to all buildings via the District Equity Team activities, such as the courageous conversations. We know that 100% of the schools now have equity team representatives, and we're very happy to hear about that. We look forward to 100% of all those schools formalizing their equity focus goal in their school improvement plans. I would like to add the word showing respect, that we show respect in all school settings, including everyone, in the classrooms, on the playgrounds, in our cafeterias, on the buses, everywhere. I thank you for your time, and we hope that you'll know how important it is to make sure that our kids have a safe and civil environment as a result of the election fallout and backlash. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Miguel Smith, followed by Liesel Stankel.
Good evening, directors.
Good evening.
I'm here to deliver a poem titled "Land of the Free" by Honcho Mars, and my own comments. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shores. Send those, the homeless, tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door. Enter welcome to liberty. Come enjoy this land, a nation built by the sweat and blood of immigrants. A chance for freedom, a chance for the American dream. We come a long way from that statement, from embracing arms to protest rallies, hate spells from the top-down laws passed to shut down the borders. If the dream is to live America like those who come many years ago, why is it now that we do no longer want the tired, the poor, the homeless, the children who suffer the most, scared of the mob-form chattering slogans on hate? It is the norm to make fun of this situation. Who will do the work Americans will not do? They are stealing jobs from Americans. God's presence has sprinkled over the founding fathers from their beliefs to our constitutions. Where has the love gone? Why do we not now practice what God taught us? Love thy neighbor as you would love thyself. Are we now a loveless nation? Are we now a godless nation? Here in America, you must speak English first. If that is the case, then why do I not hear us speaking the language of Native Americans? Go back where you come from. We do not want you here. Send back Lady Liberty. We seem to have forgot her message. We have forgot the nation that embraced the lost. My name is Miguel Akuta Smith, and I work as a youth program coordinator for the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, and I'm also a member of the Vibrant Schools Coalition. As a young man of color who works with youth coming from immigrant communities, I want to know that I can trust school administrators and principals and teachers to intervene and prevent institutionalized discrimination. I'd like to remind everyone that not all marginalized groups are visible, and it's just as easy for individuals, LGBTQ, undocumented, or otherwise, to develop internalized oppression, especially in a vulnerable social or educational environment. We can agree that we have a strong public school system. We can also agree that our youth are impressionable, and I'm concerned that bias or prejudice may go unchecked or underestimated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Liesel is next, followed by Jonathan Johnson.
My name is Liesel Stankel. I speak as a member of Vibrant Schools, as a parent with students in this district's schools, as a Latina and as an immigrant myself. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, members of the board, superintendent, deputy superintendent, and student representative. I speak because I can. I speak because I am in a country that values free speech, that values and listens to what all say, that values community input, but I fear that I may no longer speak as freely in America. I am an immigrant. What does the land of the free mean now? For me, it means that my freedoms may more easily be taken away, my safety is not guaranteed, and my kids may be unsafe, even in school. In the wake of our elections, I feel traumatized, depressed, and scared, and more than for myself, I fear for undocumented students. I know and love students who are undocumented, and some have DACA or Deferred Action, and that face uncertainty of that status now. And what I hear and I see is hurt and fear, a fear that their families will be further dismantled with threats of deportation, and fear of an uncertain future for kids who grew up here, don't even speak another language, and face possibly being deported from the only country they know. This is their America. Send back Lady Liberty. What I ask you to do is lead. Reassure me as a parent and a mentor that you will keep my kids safe, you will keep all kids safe, regardless of the color of our skin, our gender, our sexual orientation and identity, our race, our ethnicity, and yes, our immigration status. And say it and mean it, that you will build hope, hope that an education is for all here in Tacoma. Say that you know that this may be hard times for people, when someone who will be in charge of a national-level policy says we are not equal and not wanted. Say you want us. Say you value us. Remind us all that the TPS nondiscrimination and equity policy 3111, and I quote, says, "The district also recognizes that there are additional circumstances beyond membership in a class protected by federal or state law that can significantly impact students, including poverty, housing status, homelessness, involvement in the criminal justice system, and immigration status. To the extent possible, the district will work to mitigate the impact of these barriers on its students. I ask you to reflect on how you work to mitigate the impact of these barriers now, every day, especially now. Instead of the statement that I received as a parent, the role of educators is to take a neutral stance and help students understand all the issues involved on their journey to become productive citizens of our society," a direct quote from my principal on this weekly robocall, an email. Instead, please say, "We will keep your children safe. We will not tolerate anything that makes children feel unsafe. We will vigorously enforce our nondiscrimination and bullying policies and protect you. You all matter. You all are valued. We want you to know we seek to know you, the many gifts you bring. We know our schools are stronger for your skills and your courage. We care about giving you a world-class education. Look into the eyes of each hurt and scared child. Face us families, please mean it."
Liesel, please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Johnson, followed by Will Jenkins.
Good evening, and I thank you all for an opportunity to be heard. For many, the dogs of hate have been released. I remember those dogs, growing up and seeing them on television as young people who looked like me were being attacked. The dogs are now figurative, but they're also very personal. When you see a child break into tears because someone says something to them, because they feel that that's the appropriate thing to do now, we as the adults, I hope and pray, will step in and make sure they know that the policies, the foundation that we work and live on, will be maintained. I find it very hard to say to a child, "You are not welcome here, because I don't like you." I find it very hard for people to say that and to continue to say that and get away with it. We heard what happened in Germany, and many people didn't think that it was significant until it started to affect them. I implore you, as members of a community that I love and a community that you love, that we do not just what the minimum requirement is, but we show a clarion call, a clarion call for the principles that you believe, and I believe everyone in this room believes, that all children are capable of success, and we will find a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Will Jenkins, followed by Daniel Pritchard.
First, just protocol being established, I want to again commend Tacoma, the leadership and administration for a successful job in increasing the educational outcomes of all of our students. I'm reminded when I talk about respect, given the political arena that we just saw that we're now in, I'm reminded of a time of meeting an individual, Karen Oshka, when we met at a coffee shop during when I ran for school director last year, and we talked, and we said that one of the things we're going to do is run a respectful campaign. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Respect. I quote, "Respect is something that should ebb and flow up and down all respected elected leadership in our communities, in no particular order, I might add, and that the ideology of respect then allows for open dialogue and restructuring of our minds. And the restructuring of our minds is from that of possible fixed mindset to that of a growth mindset and yielding unlimited potential." The reason I'm here today on behalf, my name is Dr. Will Jenkins, on behalf of Vibrant Schools, work with the NAACP, and have a nonprofit organization right here in Tacoma, trying to help our community. And when I talk about socio-emotional aspects of our students, I ask that the school board could really take a look at this, the socio-emotional aspect, and also the physical needs of our students, not so much as them coming to school, but the care that's needed to ensure that there's no sexual assault, violence, or those magnitudes that are taking place within our schools. It's come to my knowledge that some of these things are happening. I have reported those, and I just ask that you really, really take a look at those, because those families are directly impacted by this, and if they feel that there's no hope, that child feels as though there's no hope. So thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Pritchard, followed by Cassandra, oops, no, I'm sorry. Daniel is our final speaker regarding safety in schools.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Daniel Pritchard, and I am a member, a board member of Vibrant Schools, continuing the same theme that you've heard the predecessors speak on. We partner with the school district to find ways of ensuring that all students benefit and succeed in the educational programs offered. in the educational programs offered by the district. I also represent an organization known as Asia-Pacific Cultural Center. I am a first-generation Samoan American. My parents immigrated here from American Samoa. My father served in the U.S. military during World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. My daughter is currently enlisted in the U.S. Army. My nephew is in his third year at West Point. I say this because we grew up as patriots and continue to love and serve this country. We are proud to be Americans, as are the forty-seven members of Asia-Pacific Cultural Center representing forty-seven countries and cultures who are trying to become legal and prospering immigrants here and in this country. We are also proud of our culture and our heritage, and it's why we get concerned when too many of our Asia-Pacific Islander students fall behind in school and don't succeed. And that's kind of the charge we are with Asia, with the Byram Schools. But there's an overarching concern, and that's what we're addressing tonight. And I'm going to start with, I'm going to insert a little poem here. It's called "A Day Well Spent" by the famous author Unknown. "If you sit down at set of sun and count the deeds that you've done, and counting, find one self-denying act, one word that eased the heart of him that heard, one glance most kind which felt like sunshine where it went, then you may count that day well spent. But if through all the livelong day you've eased no heart by yea or nay, if through it all you've nothing done that you can trace that brought the sunshine to just one face, no act most small that helped some soul and nothing cost, then count that day as worse than lost." Every student, every day, and that's what we want to do, is make sure that every day is a day well spent in our schools, that it's safe. There's a lot of anger, hate, fear, distrust, and betrayal in our country today. Pierce County and on our city of Tacoma is not isolated from the immense angst that's out there. True, half of the voting population in our country is okay with how things are looking for our future, and many are biting at the bit to begin rolling out their agenda. The other half of us are worried, fearful, and uncertain as to what the future holds. Time will tell, but by all indications, we're in for a rough and at times potentially dangerous journey. So let's be prepared and proactive whenever we can. We believe this is one of those times to be ahead of the wave. Let's not let, let's not wait for it to come crashing down on us, but instead, with purpose and positive energy, send the message to our children via our schools that America will always be the home of the free and the brave, and our schools will reflect the values most dear to our country.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please do.
So, thank you so much, speakers, for coming and talking to us. I want you to know that our teachers and our support staff and our custodians and our bus drivers are all devastated. And so they are working and committed to make sure that our students are safe. We, as a cabinet and leadership team, are, we're sitting together and working together to talk about how we build an infrastructure that is bigger and better than it is now to support our students. We have always been about respect and love and care and support to our students, and we will continue that work. And in the, you know, in the presence of this threat, we will make sure that we redouble our efforts. I ask you to spread to the community, and for those that are watching on television, that if you hear of any incidents, that you let us know immediately, that you get it to your principal or to your teacher because we will take those all very seriously. There will be no incidents in Tacoma Public Schools that are not taken care of. So please know that we acknowledge, we, we have those same concerns, and, you know, we know that the only thing that we can do is to plan and to act. Please know this is one of those things, Dr. Jenkins talked about community. You all know, we can't do this on our own. We have to do it together. We have to work together. We have to plan together. We have to protect our community together. So I look forward to working with you to make sure that we make a strong stand on behalf of students, that we continue our good work to make sure that we hold everyone, regardless of your religion, or your color, or your orientation, that we stand behind you, ready to document. You, you will learn and be educated and be treated well in Tacoma Public Schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Santoro.
We have the next speaker, Cassandra, I think it's Cassandra Davis.
Davis.
What's the last name?
Davis.
Davis, thank you. Who wants to speak regarding this Satanic, Satanic Temple Church. And she will be followed by Jessica Heck and Gina, Gina.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. I don't have any background as far as professional. I'm just a grandmother. My two children, grandchildren, Chloe and Mason Applegate, attend Point Defiant School. And as everyone knows, the Satanic Temple group isn't allowed to come into the school. I'm just, I guess I need to let off some steam that this is allowed. I'm wondering, a couple of things. Do these people go through criminal background checks before they're allowed to come into the schools? And I'm wondering about the actual money that they pay to rent the space. Where does that money go, and what is it spent on? And are the materials that they use to teach in these classes, are they at all monitored by anybody in the schools? That's really about it. I just wanted to kind of, like I said, let off some steam about this because it's, to me, it's insanity that these people are going to be allowed in with our precious innocent kids. So I don't know if someone could give me these answers later on the questions I have, but I would appreciate it. Thank you.
If I can, just make a short statement. I, I think it's important that we reinforce that this is not a Tacoma club at all. It has nothing to do with Tacoma Public Schools. They are allowed to rent space in our building because we allow any other agency to rent space in our building. The money, Steve, I goes, I imagine goes into our general fund?
It does, and it goes to support replacing nets and different things for our facility use.
Okay. So I just think it's real important that our public hear and understand that we are under, we are under the law required to provide equal access to any, any place that comes in. We don't supervise curriculum or any of that because we are not in charge. This is an after-school entity that is renting space in our building.
It is also one-hundred percent completely voluntary. And so students do not have to have access if their families choose not to have access to that. So once again, it is not Tacoma Public Schools Club. And so we don't supervise the curriculum. We don't know what the curriculum is. But students that don't want to attend do not have to attend or attend any kind of informational setting around that topic as well.
I think it's also important that, to know that they are meeting once, you know, once a month, and that if nobody shows, then they won't exist. So I just think that's important for the public to know. But thank you for the continued, you know, examination of what's going on. We have Jessica Heck and Gina who want to speak regarding McKinney-Vento homeless children.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Gina Cabadu, and with me is Jessica Heck. We're both Masters of Social Work students at the University of Washington in Tacoma. So as students ourselves, we're very concerned about other students, but especially those that are homeless, which we've come to talk to you about today. So we recognize that the board and the state at large is under huge pressure under the Federal McKinney-Vento Act to pursue educational enrollment and stability goals. We understand that at a state level, the Homeless Youth Prevention Act proposes that all students require educational opportunities, and we look to address the discharge of foster youth and juvenile youth into going straight into becoming homeless youth. And on a local level, we really want to applaud the district for being a leadership on a local level with programs such as the Macarver Special Housing Program that offers this range of supports to prevent relocation and self-sustainability in our very own communities. So Jessica actually works with the homeless youth in particular, and she can provide insights on how we can build upon the strengths we already have and continue to address our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Jessica.
Thanks, Gina. So like she said, my name is Jessica, so I work for a local transitional housing program. So I get to see a little bit of the other side where I'm helping families, walking them through, hey, this is what McKinney-Vento is, here's how we help. But I've unfortunately also seen, even in Tacoma Public Schools, some instances where people are like, who's a McKinney-Vento liaison? What does that look like? And kids are, it's not getting communicated to the transportation staff. Kids are waiting at home, and they're already in really vulnerable positions. And as we know, school is one of the most stable places for, especially kids experiencing homelessness. That's why this act exists. So I just want to throw out some practical tips that even I found on my end that would really help families. One just being, having education for the transportation staff or administration who just know what that is. I know teachers, and I know a lot of the education's happening. But just to be able to make sure people are, they're all part of the process, understand how important it is to make that happen really speedily. Another thing is just to have kind of those ready resources. Some of them are, I'm sending kids to school, and they don't have school supplies. They're starting a couple months later, a few days late. So we're just thinking of those little practical things that could help kids really smoothly transition because they're experiencing a lot of chaos outside of that. And then finally, a shameless plug for the social workers. We know you guys are working on getting a lot more social, school social workers, and that's someone that could lead that education and lead, getting those resources put around families holistically and walking those kids through that process to keep them stable. So, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you for coming before us. We really appreciate it. And are you at the UW-T?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is speaking regarding the Santa Parade on Sixth Avenue. And the speaker is Santa, I mean, I mean Al Switzer.
Better known as Santa Claus in our neighborhood.
Good evening. Madam Santoro, Madam Vial, school board members. I'm here on behalf of the Sixth Avenue Business District and our Santa Parade. We would like to invite you to ride with us in this parade this year. We've gotten a letter, the school district is, we're going to partner together with this program and hopefully create a internship program that's going to work right in with your, the whole Child Initiative program. We are trying to do this so that it's for the kids, for the families, and everything that we do is going to be done the same way you do it. That's a pretty good way to do it. I've seen your report card. I've been watching the, your program and your, the, the state superintendent and the different awards you guys have done. Absolutely fantastic. We're hoping to be with Sixth Avenue. We're hoping to be part of this, this organization and help with that. And I think that we can go a long ways by doing that. We've given you a packet so you can see the different things that have happened so far. Two thousand fourteen, we did a slow drive, and we had estimated about five hundred spectators showed up with very little advertising. Last year, we estimated about thirty-five hundred. And this year, things have gotten pretty big. We're expecting about forty different units, or forty different groups. I don't know how big each of the groups are going to be, but we would really like to get the kids from the schools to be part of this. We'd like their bands and the ROTCs and any of the groups that have anything to do with the school district. We'd like to have them. We'd also like to let the ASB clubs maybe come out and put a Hot Chocolates Stand together and make a little money for the kids too that way. This parade is going to be sponsored, and we've got, Home Street Bank is our lead sponsor this year. And the Goodwill has donated over a thousand strand of light, so we can try to get them up. But it's, it's a real chore trying to get everything out and done. And then last night, we heard from the Seattle Mariners, and they're coming in to help us sponsor also. So we're going to grow, and we're going to grow, and we want to be a large part of what you're doing here. So again, we're asking you to come be with us, be part of the fun. Just let us know because we'd like to get you some really nice rides to be in. Okay? Thank you so much for your time and everything you do.
So why don't you say the date and the time?
The date is, I'm sorry. The date is December fourth. It's the first Sunday of the month, and we're going to start at six o'clock. We're going to go from Jason Lee to Alder. We've made arrangements with Pierce Transit so that the school buses, if they bring participants over for bands and things like that, the buses are going to be able to park on the opposite side of Alder, going westbound. And so the kids, once they get done in the parade, they just cross the street, get on the bus, and they're headed home. So we're trying to make this as quick and easy. Estimated times between an hour to an hour and a half this year. Madam Vial, I thank you. I got a phone call from Amanda Scott-Thomas. From there, this has grown, and it's just beginning to be something that's going to be really fun, I think, for everybody. And we really need the kids.
Thank you, Al, so much. And I had the pleasure to ride with Al on his sleigh last year in the parade, and it was great. It was wall-to-wall kids and a great event for the Sixth Ave and that, that community. And thank you for all of the stuff that you do in the community, and I know it goes beyond this. And I look forward to being there on, on the fourth. I'll be there.
Well, I would like to ask Madam Santoro and yourself if you'd ride with me this year?
Sure, absolutely.
You have a special spot?
Just, just remember, Madam Santoro, I got to do it first.
I, I learned while I was in school, if you start at the top, it's easier to go down.
Thank you, and we'll look forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Amanda, thank you for your assistance. Great, great.
So I'm going to ask Catherine Gomez to come to the podium next. I want you to know that we have three speakers speaking regarding the school boundary lines, and we tried to keep them together. So there was one speaker that would have been in front of Catherine, but I'm putting you with the group, okay? So Catherine is here to talk about the Next Move program. Tell me your name again.
Catherine.
Catherine, good, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to talk about the Next Move Internship Program. My name is Catherine Gomez. I attended Henry Falls High School last year, and I am currently enrolled or attending Washington State University, and I am planning to major in animal science. I believe during, in December of my senior year, the Next Move program and their coaches came to my school telling us about this amazing program, allowing us to intern at places we would like. And with their help, I was able to intern at VCA Pacific Avenue Animal Hospital. And before interning here, I didn't really know. I was kind of confused if I wanted to work in the animal field or not. But after interning there and experiencing everything, I now know that I want to be a veterinarian. And during my time at VCA, there were gross moments. There were very amazing moments, watching five-hour-long surgeries, watching puppies being born, and it was honestly an amazing experience. And I wouldn't have been able to do this without the Next Move program. I feel prepared. I have, in the internship program, I was able to intern for one hundred hours. But then after my internship was done, they offered me a job. And so I worked there in the summer, and I'm allowed to go back there every summer in between college and winter breaks. So I already have three hundred hours of experience. And since I want to go to vet school, you need at least three hundred to five hundred hours of experience, and I already have three hundred. So with their help, I'm already going to be able to stand out among my other fellow animal science majors that also want to be veterinarians. And without the Next Move program, I wouldn't have been able to get all this hands-on experience. I wouldn't have been able to know this is what I want to do for a career in the future. And I'm really glad that there are programs like the Next Move program that helps students explore the possibilities of every career before even going to college and allowing all high school students to be prepared and to know what they want to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, and you're going to the right school for veterinary medicine.
We have three speakers that want, that are going to talk about the school boundary lines. Rosalyn, can I ask you, I know you went to Sherman, they're all from Sherman. Could you give just a little overview of your meeting there?
Yes, and I would also add, we did have an extensive public process. However, one of the last changes that we made was to a small group between the Mason and Truman boundary lines, current boundary lines, where we would shift some students from Mason over to Truman. And apparently, the viewer that we had on the website didn't really make it easy for our families to see that that transition had occurred or that was proposed. And so we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to voice their concerns. So we scheduled a quick meeting out there today in order to hear, you know, whatever issues that they wanted to address with us. The meeting went well. It was well-attended, about twelve parents there, plenty of children with them. And we were able to hear many of the concerns that they share regarding their community that we will now take back to the committee and make formal recommendations based on better feedback. that we will now take back to the committee and make formal recommendations based on, um, better feedback.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosalyn.
Um, I think I'm gonna mispronounce this name. I apologize. Maria Stevens? Could you give me the connect, correct pronunciation when you come to the mic?
Everybody gets it wrong. Don't worry. It's Maria Stevens. It's an odd spelling. Thank you. Um, my name is Maria Stevens and I live on North Stevens Street. It wasn't planned. My husband and I bought our house two years ago with the idea that our daughters would attend Sherman Elementary and then go on to Mason Middle School. I'm upset because I wasn't made aware of the new changes, the proposed changes, until about a week and a half ago. Um, I was checking the emails all the time. Every time I brought up the link, um, our area, our neighborhood was not affected. Um, it wasn't until a neighbor had told me about the changes and I looked and something popped up showing that our neighborhood would now go to Truman Middle School. Based on our address, the, the area that we are in, um, our daughters will, who go to Sherman, will go on to Truman based on the new boundaries and then, um, for middle school and then go to Stadium High School when the majority of Truman students go in our feeders into Wilson. Um, they're gonna be shifted from their friends, their groups, three times. Um, and I just don't know if this was looked at when you guys revised, when, um, I don't know what sort of representation from our neighborhood was involved in, um, the changes. It seems to me, or from what I learned in the meeting, it was a recent change, kind of a last-minute change. Um, we haven't had enough time to voice our opinions. Um, there was a lot of, um, I think, lack of transparency. It was, there wasn't enough information that was, um, sent out to the areas in that neighborhood would, who would be affected. So, um, I do ask that you, um, give us more time to have some involvement. If we are going to be changed, have some say. Um, I think it's December eighth that you guys are making the final decision. Um, we, that's just not enough time if we've had a week and a half to, um, kinda be involved in this. And, um, yeah, that's all I have to say. I just would like that you would, um, give us some more time or at the very least that we would, um, our children would be grandfathered in the current boundaries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brooke Manning, who will be followed by Stephanie Davison.
Hello, good evening. My name's Brooke Manning and my children also are in Sherman, in the Sherman boundaries this year. And what I wanna begin by saying tonight is that the most common theme I continue hearing is regards to community and building a community. And at Sherman, we have a kindergartner ourselves and we have a four-year-old and a two-year-old, all three of which will go to Sherman. This is our first experience with a kindergartner and the community that has embraced us at Sherman is absolutely phenomenal. The network of parents and the involvement of parents and the teaching, the teachers are wonderful. Our principal is absolutely amazing. We are so thrilled with our elementary school. With this new boundary lines that have been proposed that we heard a lot about tonight, and thank you for the extra meeting tonight that we all had a chance to speak. Um, it is literally taking our elementary school and dividing it in half. Half of our student body will go on to Mason, the other half will go on to Truman. Whereas prior to this division, about ninety-ish, ninety-five-ish percent went on to Mason together. In the Tacoma Public Schools, I looked all the way down from where Sherman is to Point Defiance to Skyline, all the way up to where Franklin is. Every other school gets divided at about eighty-five percent, where eighty-five moves on together. Skyline and Point Defiance, a hundred percent go into Truman together. The only school that is divided fifty-fifty is Downing Elementary School. And Downing, that line has not shifted in years. So if you bought a home within the Downing School, you knew if you were buying a home going to Mason or going to Truman. Whereas our neighborhood alone, on our one street, I live across the alley from the Stevens. They have two young girls, one of which is kindergarten, one of which is not in school yet. Our neighbor's to the other side, she got stuck in traffic, couldn't be here tonight. Kindergartner, a two-year-old. We have this huge group of children that are coming up, going into Sherman. All of us, and all three of us bought our homes. We just bought our home a year ago. The other neighbor just bought the home a year ago. All bought that home thinking that we were going from Sherman on to Mason with the entire school. And now we are in this one wedge where we are going to move our children from Sherman over, over to, instead of Mason, over to Truman. But not just that, where our particular homes are, so this wedge that was created, it's divided again. Whereas our particular side of this wedge, not only are they going over to Truman, but then, like Maria had said, our one particular wedge of this is also gonna get divided again and we are in the Stadium District. So our particular part, you take that wedge and then you take it in half again. So that whole group of children will be divided from Sherman, between Mason and Truman, and then another time from Truman to Stadium and Wilson. And I just can't emphasize enough how we just keep hearing about community and, uh, this, this shift is just going to divide that Sherman community. And those kids need each other. I mean, the teenage years are hard enough. I really, really can't imagine doing it without your good friends that you built out through those elementary years and then to have to do it again going into high school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Stephanie Davison, followed by Tom Luz.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Davison. Um, this is a bit unprop too. I went to a four o'clock meeting today, uh, when I first found out about the boundary changes and so now I'm here. So I don't have a formal presentation. I have the paperwork that we received at the meeting. But I'm just concerned that the Sherman parent community hasn't been given the ample time to, uh, really communicate their concerns on the north-end boundary change that's happening with the Mason Middle School. Um, I think there's a lot of parents that would, uh, love to be here tonight or would've loved to have been at the four o'clock meeting that due to work schedules, um, aren't able to do so. And I just ask that we're given some more time to voice our concerns, to keep the north-end community as a whole, as Brooke and Maria stated. Our school is now split in half, um, which is unfortunate for these children. And it would be nice to be able to keep it as a whole for these kids going to Sherman, who then go to Mason, who then go to Stadium and to keep that process, uh, in place. I think also that it's going to affect the north-end community for new families that are coming into the community. A lot of people look at, uh, the ratings of schools and the test scores. And a lot of people in the Tacoma area, uh, do like Sherman and they do like the Mason School. And it would be sad to see that community change, um, because the school district boundaries have changed. So I just ask that we're given more time to voice our opinions. Hopefully that the north-end boundary isn't changed so we still stay within the same boundary that we currently have. Um, or that we have a grandfather clause for the families that currently live in this, uh, area that are going to Sherman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Luz? Luz?
Luz?
Luz?
Uh, thank you so much. I just wanted to first echo the comments, uh, that were previously made. Uh, our family just found out about this a few days ago. Um, and like everyone else, when you buy a house and you plan to have a family, you think a lot about, uh, schools and what schools your kids are gonna attend. And, uh, community is very important. Um, our oldest daughter, Emma, uh, started out in kindergarten at Sherman. And after a week or two in, uh, first grade, we ended up sending her to, to Seaberry for a year. And we had a great experience there, but we missed the community that, uh, of kids and families that we had found at Sherman. And so this year we decided, uh, to send her back with the hope and the expectation that this core group of girls that she's become friends with, uh, she can continue to be friends with and carry on those relationships as she moves through her schools. Um, you know, I think anytime you talk about, uh, families and schools and things like that, you, you need to understand, you know, th- these are, are real things to real people. And, uh, I, I just really hope that these girls get a chance because it says something about how we, as a family, wanna continue participating in the school district. And, uh, again, we, we found out about this a few days ago. Um, my wife attended a meeting at four o'clock today and I got a panicked phone call from her saying, "You've, you've gotta come to the meeting today and talk about this." We, we, at a minimum, we need more time. But we really hope that, uh, the outreach that was done this afternoon, which was a step in the right direction, can go further to, to really survey the, the parents, uh, right now at Sherman or, or find some way to, to take a look at this. Cause it, it does impact our ability to, to wanna stay in the district and to wanna continue to be, you know, making a positive impact. So thank you for your work and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's the, that's the last speaker.
Okay. Moving on, item number seven, Superintendent's Report, seven-one, Safety Report. Mrs. Santoro?
So we typically don't give our quarterly reports during the Superintendent's Report, but I ask, uh, because, um, our time is adjusted based on, um, the holiday, I ask, uh, Ms. Pace if she would give us, um, a quick, uh, safety report. Remember, our safety report will report on the benchmarks that have already been established. And, um, I ask her to kinda take us through those. Thank you. And with, uh, Ms., Dr. Cubista.
Yes, I, I invited our expert, Dr. Jen Cubista, to come and walk us through some of the data that we have tonight. Um, this is gonna be a quick update and, um, we will come back to you again in, on April with, uh, more data tonight. We're gonna be looking at, um, fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen. And there, there won't be any data for the current year that we're in, so we'll be bringing that back to you in April. Um, so I've, uh, like I said, I've asked Dr. Cubista to join us, uh, to take us through this data through the lens of the whole child.
Good evening. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. Never know. Let's try that. Uh, so again, just, uh, as we start, uh, good evening, President Vial, Board of Directors, Superintendent Santoro, uh, and the rest of our, uh, staff and community. Um, we're just starting with, uh, just a quick overview so everybody, uh, has a reminder of what Goal, uh, excuse me, Goal Two says in regards to safety. A school will create and maintain safe learning environments that promote excellent academics achievement. Um, we're gonna look at three, all three levels, both elementary, middle, and high school. Um, and so we're just gonna go through really the last, uh, two years. So again, as Ms. Pace said, both fourteen fifteen school year and fifteen sixteen school year in regards to the, to the data. Um, so this, this first, uh, glance is at the elementary. Um, and again, this benchmark is specific to both third grade and fifth grade, uh, pieces of data. With that, uh, you can see over the last two years, we're, A, moving in the right direction towards the goal, uh, for third grade ninety-seven percent as well as, uh, sixth gr- excuse me, fifth grade for ninety-six percent. Um, but really, um, we have seen a little bit of a flat, uh, over the last two years i- in regards to, um, our, our movement in that area. Um, the data, but, um, again, we're gonna get into a little bit more detail in regards to what that means.
So just real quickly, for those that are watching at home, a lot of times, school districts will report, um, the, the percentage of students that have been suspended or expulsions. Our benchmark is the percentage of students that have not. And so you want that number in the higher, when you see it rising, the percentage, that means there's less students being involved, uh, for a suspension or expulsion. Um, so just those that are watching at home, this is not the percentage of students that have been, but have not been.
Thank you for that clarification.
So the next slide is just looking at, uh, each of the different subgroups. Um, and I just wanna highlight a couple of things. The red highlight, um, is for each group that has five, a five percent or potentially more gap to the goal of the benchmarks. Um, so a couple of things, I mean, again, part of this is we have, uh, done, our principals, our staffs, our community continue to do fantastic work. Um, there are still areas of growth that obviously we can see in this, but there are pieces, as I look at this, in some of the shifts that we've seen in some of the subgroups that we are making progress. All of the elementary schools are in either year two or more of the whole child. So last year was the last round of what I'm gonna call that baseline year of them, uh, starting to really implement, uh, some of the shifts that we are doing with, with the Whole Child Initiative. So, again, I think this is just, we still have work to do. I think that's, that's clear. But, um, we are, are moving, uh, definitely in the, the right direction. Um, the next one is the middle school, um, and probably by far the, the group that has, uh, the most, uh, significant, um, growth areas that we need to continue to improve on. Um, you can see for both, um, this one, again, suspend, uh, those we are looking at without suspensions or expulsions. Um, and just to clarify, what we mean by suspensions and expulsions, just to clarify, is both long-term suspensions, short-term suspensions, any in-house types of suspension. So kids may be in school, but they may not be participating all day in all of their classes. Uh, emergency expulsions and then expulsions in general, that what we're talking about here. Um, so you can see there is an increase, uh, slightly in, in the last two years with, uh, both the sixth grade and the eighth grade. Um, we're moving in the right direction for this. Um, but as you go to the next page and really looking at some of the subgroups, we've got work. Um, we have, uh, so you can see here, there are of, of the groups that are in red. Seven of those groups are showing increases, but they are still behind, um, from the projected benchmark, uh, goal that is set for twenty eighteen. So, uh, we continue to do work in, in those areas. Um, I think it's important to note here, six of the ten middle schools have chosen to be part of the Whole Child implementation. And so, uh, a majority of them are in two-year or more, uh, in their implementation phases. So we'll, we'll begin to see, again, that work, but we do not have all of the middle schools involved in that yet. Everybody's making progress and being ready to, to dive into that and moving that. And again, those highlighted areas are those subgroups that are, again, outside or have five or more percentage, uh, from the, the goal. Uh, next is, uh, high school, again, those without suspension or expulsions. And you can see, uh, ninth grade, uh, has moved, uh, a couple percentage points as well as the twelfth grade. Uh, we really only have, uh, one school that is in implementation of the Whole Child at the high school of two or more. There are several that have come on, that have come on for this year. This is their baseline year. Um, and so we know that, that we'll be getting, we'll continue to see those changes. But I do wanna point out Mount DeHomo real quickly because I did pull some data to just give an example of their twel- twelfth grade. Um, and even, even their, their ninth grade has moved a, a couple of percentage points. But just to give you an idea, in fourteen fifteen, they had eighty-eight point eight percent of their students without a suspension and, and/or expulsion. Last year, their twelfth graders had ninety-five point two percent without, uh, suspensions or expulsion. So just giving an example of, of some of the good work, uh, that's going on. We, we still have work to do. Um, so again, you go to this, uh, looking at the subgroup areas. Red, again, indicating that there are, uh, uh, gaps, five percent or more with, within those pieces. But, um, one of the key things I wanna, uh, note is that of those nine red areas, seven of them are moving in the positive direction over the last couple of years. So, again, that's a po- you know, I look at the positive pieces of how do we keep moving that needle in the right direction, uh, in regards to those pieces. And again, as I said, we only have three high schools in the Whole Child Initiative as we speak and only one school in Mount DeHomo with two or more years, uh, of that implementation. Um, so again, as we talked about, we continue to look at those, uh, significant gaps in the work that we do. Um, we continue to team with other departments and how do we continue to make things better, uh, with those pieces. Uh, I also think as we look at and, um, really dive more into, cause you watch, uh, building principals in regards to looking at their discipline, uh, we have principals that are being progressive in their discipline. Um, in your appendix, you're gonna see some of those, uh, moves where principals are having conversations with families or meeting with them in conferences to really, instead of moving kids out of school in suspensions and expulsion. So, again, you're seeing some of those trends happen. Um, again, as I said, we have all the elementary schools that are now in either, this will be their second year or more in implementation. And I think you can see some of the work that they're doing, both their teachers and staff, uh, as well as their principals in, in moving some of those numbers. Um, we are continuing to increase our restorative practices, uh, and really how do we m- make sure that we're not kicking kids out of school and are there alternatives to that, um, that we can really work through? And then I just wanna acknowledge, because there are several of them in the room. Uh, for about a year and a half, uh, we worked very hard. There was a Student Conduct and Discipline Committee that worked extremely hard. And then obviously, we've had some new law come into place. Um, and so we continue to, with our policy thirty-two forty-one R, which is, which is specifically about the student conduct within our schools. Uh, we'll continue to streamline that, um, and really start to, uh, move forward with actions and approaches as we, as we move forward. Um, just a quick, in regards to the climate survey, uh, just some quick data. So we had a new climate survey this past school year in fifteen sixteen. We're in the process of, of, of collaborating that, or, excuse me, collecting that and getting it to a place where we can, it fits into the benchmark because it is with an outside organization that we partnered with. Uh, but just wanna give you a couple of highlights. Uh, for students, uh, last year's participation was actually fifty-one point six percent of our students. So we see an increase of there, in there. Uh, and again, the, the climate survey is given fourth through twelfth grade. Um, when you look at staff, uh, participation last year in the fifteen sixteen was nineteen fifteen, uh, total. And we are still working on integrating, uh, those pieces, uh, to move into the- still working on integrating those pieces to move into the, put onto the benchmark webpage, because we did get it from an outside organization that we partner with, the Center for Educational Effectiveness. They're the ones that also do the School of Distinction Awards, so we've been partnering them with the climate survey. And then, oops, excuse me. And then finally, with our parents, let me go back there. This past year, our parent participation was 3980, so a slight increase in there. And that was, again, we want to continue to integrate that, and we'll get that up on the website as we move forward with that.
So for those that are following along at home, our numbers appear to be off from your comments, so please forgive us. So we will go back, and we will verify our numbers, and then make sure they're accurately posted online.
I was going to make that comment at the end.
For the climate surveys for students, staff, and parents.
Correct. I did not even see that.
Apologize for that.
Yep.
Can you fix those, Jen, and give them back to us?
Yep. No, they would have been 1516. I will double check that, because I, again, I thought those numbers were correct.
We believe in accuracy and transparency, so we just want to acknowledge that, and we will get them adjusted. If you can bring the correct numbers back to the board.
Yep. So a couple of the next steps that we will continue to do with this, we'll continue obviously with the professional development with our whole child schools. That's, again, looking at school-wide practices, classroom practices, and again, from hearing from the community and some of the social-emotional that we continue to move forward with as a district, and as I said, the restorative justice practices. We'll continue to, a deeper dive, because there is more information in the climate survey, so what can we glean from that to help us as we move in the future, not only with the safety goal, but the other three goals in general? We have started a conversation with the Center for, excuse me, the National Center for Restorative Justice that opened up in Seattle. It's actually got two offices, one in Seattle and one in New York. Nicholas Bradford, who reached out to me, I am in the process of working with him to bring a forum to Tacoma with our, both staff and probably students involved in that forum, so we're pretty excited about that. And then currently going on right now, we do have our survey going out with our Health to Youth Survey, which is every other, every two years that that's done through the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. And that is our report.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions or comments by members of the board? Director Heinz.
Thank you for the report. My questions are focused on reason for suspensions. Can you give us, well, to start, can you give us a general idea of?
What they are?
Yeah. Because it seems, over the years, to be fairly subjective, and disrespectful behavior. The student rolled their eyes at me.
Yeah, just the lovely disruptive conduct.
It seems like a poor reason to take a kid out of class.
Yeah. So again, looking at the data, there's still some of that that we are working through. There is a committee that I sit on in the state that is actually looking at, can we remove that from the OSPI part of that definition, moving forward with that? So I know that we work with the schools on if we actually know what specifically it was that we actually call that out, and that it's documented that way. A majority of the suspensions and expulsions that we are seeing is specific at times to fighting, drugs, weapons, mix of at times knives and what I would call look-alike weapons. In those pieces, we are still having a little bit of the disruptive conduct. We've had, you know, that tends to be most of the suspensions, long-term suspensions, expulsions that we're seeing within our schools. Some of that, again, we're getting better at, and then I think some of the times, we are continuing to build good relationships within our communities, as we've heard throughout the night, of how do we build, both as adults and students, good relationships, and how you can disagree to disagree in a respectful way, and what does that look like? So again, we still have those issues with disruptive conduct, where they're becoming less and less, but they're still there. And our principals are really buying into that progressive discipline of having a conversation with the student, possibly with their family, et cetera, or coming up with different alternatives for them. We've seen letters of apology and different things, instead of going that suspension route for those types of behaviors that, in the past, had been, you know, put out for suspensions, as an example.
I think for some kids, they're looking for a reason to not have to come to school, and if we just suspend them and we don't correct the behavior. So I think part of it is getting ourselves as a district calibrated. Do we have, when I look in the appendix, I don't see the data broken down by school. I'm interested in how we monitor teachers, so we can see, are there certain teachers or certain schools that are disproportionately suspending or expelling kids? Is that?
We do internally. We have, through our Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, we have each, there's grade-level teams, there's school-wide teams that look and monitor the data in real time. And they look at the types of incidences, where the incidences happen, who, time of day. So we're trying to build proactive supports for kids using those analytics. And then each school builds, and each grade-level team builds their own action plans based on that. And then schools, in their reports, have that type of data. We focus it at this, the board conversation at the district level, but you can actually see in each of the school reports, there, where they are in the discipline rates as well.
Are those posted somewhere?
Yes, there's school report data in there. We do never, we don't post teacher data, but we do school-wide of how many suspensions and expulsions they have. And then each school improvement plan has opportunities to describe their action plans, and those school improvement plans will ultimately be posted as well.
So I'd be interested in future presentations to see that, because I would be curious to know if there's, I just look for patterns. I'd be interested to see what sort of practices are occurring in what neighborhoods and in what schools, to make certain there's consistency. And I am optimistic that the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative will have a factor in the downward trend, but I don't see, when I look at the numbers, I don't see the downward trend that I would hope to see when it comes to suspensions. I see an increase when I look at eighth grade, short-term suspensions, 272 in 2014, 342 in 2016. So I know we're early in Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, so I think that's why it's even more important to shine a light on, are there catchment areas, are there school buildings that are disproportionately? I'd like to know where these numbers are coming from. In the aggregate, it's much more difficult for us to get in and assess what's going on, and if there needs to be, you know, it's all well and good to wait for Tacoma Whole Child Initiative to take root, but those are real kids and real families that are potentially being negatively impacted in the interim. And I'd like to better understand where that's occurring and why.
So under, you said in the middle school, you saw increases?
Yeah, so in appendix slide 16, I see short-term suspensions in 2014 were 272, and in 2016 were 342.
So different group of kids to different group of kids as well, right? And so we have, from 15 to 16, we have the numbers actually decreasing. So they went up, and then they went back down.
But the logic then would go the other way, different group of kids to different group of kids. But if we're systematically building a process by which we're trying to reduce that, then I would hope that we would see a trend line where it's decreasing across the system.
You bet.
Thank you.
I second everything Director Heinz just said, and then have a couple of follow-up questions. Your response about the numbers and the hikes was helpful, but you relate, I think in the end, you gave some examples of things that would probably trigger long-term suspensions. So the numbers in the appendices looks like the short term was the bulk, so I'm like Director Heinz, I'm curious about the reasons. I know that there's been a lot of work at the state level around that defiance and disrespect category and other categories, but I just want to say more about the reasons for some of those short-term suspensions. And then I'm particularly concerned about where we're at with our African-American and Black students. It doesn't show it in the third grade and fifth grade slide, but it looks like in 2016 for Black students, they're below that 5% threshold too. So there isn't one 2016 category where African-American students are within that 5% gap. So just, I know that we're doing a lot of great work, but that piece in particular, it just, it's really troubling, and it's really personally, because when a kid was suspended like four times in the second, five times in the second grade, different school, total different outcome. So it's just really important, and I know that you're focused on this every day, so I won't say that we focus on it, but it's important. We all know that.
Absolutely.
My other question was about, you've mentioned that in the middle school, six of the 10 middle schools have opt-edification statements to Tacoma Whole Child Initiative.
Correct.
Are there other middle schools of those four left that are planning on coming online soon?
We continue to work with the secondary schools. Again, the focus really was at the elementary level and continues to be, again, with changes and adding counselors at the elementary level and different pieces. But the goal is to have, at some point, everyone on board. Part of that is continued readiness. And again, we have schools that are doing really good things, but continuing to, how do you have the same language and the, moving forward as kids move up to each transition?
So the benchmark is actually for social-emotional learning plan, what the board originally adopted. They identified elementary schools. And so the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative is more of a how, how do we get there, around there? So the secondary schools, the board action was at elementary schools, every elementary school would have a social-emotional learning plan, which helped address the academic excellence of safety and measured by discipline. So if the board chooses to expand, then that's their privy.
Well, I would like to see us come forward with a policy that does make it mandatory at the middle schools and the high schools, simply because we teach the kids and work with the kids at the elementary school. And if we're not continuing on with common language, common behaviors that we want to see up all the way through their K-12, then I think we're, particularly our middle school kids are our most vulnerable kids. We know that. We all remember, I think, middle school years, and that's where, you know, you feel like you don't fit and this kind of thing. So I'd just like to see us, personally, I'd like to see us pursue what the ramifications would be of amending our policy and not, you know, and perhaps phasing it in a little bit, but for the high schools now, and looking at, you know, just requiring a social and emotional learning plan. I think that might fit in with the new direction we've received with the planning grant from the Wallace Foundation and things like that. So I think, for me personally, that's where I am on this whole deal.
I think that'd be interesting to talk through, and it would be also interesting to know from the middle school teams in particular, like are there something, like to get, to show that there's full buy-in early on? Like are there some things about how we rolled it out with the elementary school focus that makes it less appealing right away for the secondary teams? Or are there some tweaks that we should make for it to be really middle school-centric? I'm thinking middle school, middle school-centric, and really have that lens. That's it for me.
Okay, when I talk about disrespect, I think sometimes there's just a mismatch of teachers and students. And I always like going to the place where maybe a teacher, there should be a teacher change, especially if there's huge issues throughout the year. I've always thought that for years and years, and I think some people are very willing to look at that as a possibility, and others are not. And in the old days, like 20 years ago, they never changed classrooms, but, so I think that that is something that could work. You know, it's just sometimes the teachers don't like the students, and the students don't like the teachers, and if a student doesn't like a teacher, especially a boy, they will not perform for them at all.
I know some girls do.
Yeah. So another issue I have is, you know, the numbers. We really care about the numbers, and I just want to make sure that principals don't feel like they can't suspend a student if they need to. And so if we're seeing a school that has very few, you just want to make sure that the principals are doing the right thing, you know, supporting the teachers and having a safe school. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
And I am really not in favor of having a policy forcing the secondary schools to do that whole child. And I know that there are people who use other methods, and as Andrea said, I would really like to look at, you know, talk to them about why aren't they doing it? And are they doing something that's a little bit different, but it's also working? And when my son was in middle school, he said, they did have a program similar to this at Jason Lee when he was there, and he said, you know, there are kids who would do something right, and then they get a candy bar. And he said, I never do anything wrong, I never get a candy bar, so I feel like I should do something wrong so I can get rewarded. And I actually heard that at the school board meeting, convention, another school board member talking about that with their own child, saying the exact same thing. So I think we have to be really careful that we, you know, pat the kids on the back who are behaving all the time, and not just concentrate on the ones that have trouble. That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments of many of my fear, peers, not peers. And I have some concerns about some of the red numbers, too. It wouldn't be me if I didn't say something about the special ed numbers. Special ed in African-American males tend to be the highest in discipline, and it concerns me deeply. In special ed, the question I'm going to keep throwing out there until I find a solution is, these are individuals who have an individual education plan for which that behavior should be addressed, and I am sure those IEP teams didn't say, great, when they act up, let's suspend them from school. And if they did, we need to have some IEP training, IP team training. I'm sure that they didn't. I would really like to hear some feedback from middle schools and high schools on what they think about the whole child initiative, and how maybe it can be adapted so we have consistency through K through 12. It could be simply that there aren't resources, they could be an initiative overload, there could be lots and lots of reasons why they're not doing it. The concept of restorative justice in a community is one that's greater than getting somebody through school. It's about how do you solve problems in a way that keeps everybody whole and maintains relationships? It's a lifelong skill that I hope that we value. We have a lot of data on this, and I know that we're not looking at all the detail of the data. I'll also look forward to that, as you know. Particularly in this cultural climate, where a lot of things that most of us or many of us would find deeply offensive seem permissible. I hope that we're watching that data for any spikes, just so that if it's an indicator that there's a challenge someplace, we can be making sure that we're getting the resources out to that area in a timely fashion, because people might not speak up, because in fact, they're afraid to right now. And that might be a clue that we can look at. So with those comments in mind, thank you very much for your report, and I look forward to greater detail.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to have, see what the state definitions look like. Because.
Are there state definitions?
Yeah. Because sometimes people write those definitions that have never been in a classroom or who have taught. And, yeah, my experience was different things at different schools. I was up in a West End school one day, and one of the kids rolled their eyes, and the teacher said that, that's an office referral. And I said, not for me it's not, and he knows he shouldn't do that again. And then, you know, we overrun schools at Sheridan and Lister, that's not an office referral, and, you know, and I think that's the consistency that has bothered me throughout this whole discussion, is there is no consistency. And if the state is, you know, having definitions that are imposed on us, then I would like to see what they look like. And I think I voiced that before about, it, school to school, it differs, and because of the kids, as Dr. Garcia said, we deal with, we have different groups of kids at different schools. And I think that, you know, we may need to make sure that our definitions are consistent across the district, and I'm not sure that they are. What I, on the policy, when I was saying about this, when I said that, what I would like to see, it does not necessarily have to be the whole child initiative, but I think particularly our middle school and high school level, and I'm going to bring up a subject that touched my family a number of years ago, and that's suicide. And we have seen a horrible increase in suicide among high school and middle school kids. And I would really like to see us capture ability to help our kids socially and emotionally grow, and it doesn't have to necessarily be what we do with the whole child initiative, but something among each one of our schools where they are really cognizant of dealing with those social and emotional growth and teaching kids coping skills. And I say, it personally touched our family about 20 years ago. And it's something quite frankly, never passes away from you, that what could we have done to have made that not happen? And so that's where I'm pretty strong on that being at that middle school. And I don't very often share personal things, but this is one that I'm going to, because I don't ever want any family to go through what ours did. And I think that probably, you know, we, hopefully, with what we're doing at the elementary school level, it helps kids learn to at the elementary school level, it helps kids learn to cope. But I think sometimes, you know, all that thing that goes on in their heads as we're maturing and growing, that a reinforcement of being able to talk about issues, about being able to understand and being able to share, and learning how to deal with your anger, learning how to deal with when you're down personally and knowing how to reach out. I think those are the kind of things that I'd like to see. And that's why I'd like to see our our policy amended to be a broad policy and not dictated has to be whole child, but I would like to see social and emotional growth plans at both the middle school and at the high school level. And I think we can talk it through with our high school. And I'd ask that perhaps Superintendent Santorno and uh Dr. Garcia and Dr. Cabeska can't sit down and figure out where's a way that we're not superimposing more um stuff on top, for lack of a better word, on top of our principles that we're already asking them to do and to really be cognizant of that, because I know that this has occurred, and I know that when it happens, it devastates those at the at the schools in which these kids go to. And we've had these within our own school district in the last, you know, every year. So, you know, personally, that was one of the reasons why I'm asking for us to have that policy, so that our kids have that feeling of emotional support and learn how to deal with that when they become adults, because we all have things in our lives that are devastating and difficult to deal with. And I think the social and emotional growth, things that we do help kids get themselves through those kinds of crises. Thank you, Superintendent.
Can I ask one question here?
Just, uh, you said you were going to have a forum, and so could you notify the school board of when that is?
Yeah, it's, we're still working out those details. We are in the beginning stages of that, so I don't even have a date.
Yeah.
But yes, absolutely, we'll make sure that that as we move forward with that, we 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 have all the information to use, so you can be be a participant.
Thank you. So I'd like to see those state things, too, those state definitions.
Superintendent.
So um, I just want to remind the board that, you know, I I did visit every middle school and every high school last year to talk specifically about their plans for suspensions and expulsions. And it was very clear that they're having substantive conversations about so- supporting their students in the social emotional realm. So it, you know, it's not that it's not there, they are working on it. It is um, it's definitely a project in the in the making, but actually, I was surprised that. And so I believe that if you ask any of them for a plan, they could give it to you. You know, we haven't required them to write it and submit it, but they are operating. And the other thing that's um important to note is that um these professionals get together once a month, and that's one of the agenda items they talk about is um, you know, what they're doing and how they're moving forward. So I just want our our public to know is that uh we have, they they are having specific conversations. And you're right, um, what um Director Viall talked about is that it may not all be all be labeled under the social emotional whole child initiative, but they are certainly looking at different structures. It's amazing, if you are watching the literature right now, uh, there's, there's so much discrepancy and conflict between um, you know, the approaches with others saying, no, don't do restorative justice because, you know, you're going to um, you know, you're going to preclude students from from being suspended that should be. So there is just a lot of data out there. Um, we're not the only urban district that's struggling with this work. And I think that we have um school principals that are taking it very seriously and are are making a dent in um, you know, this, you know, we we have lots to do. Um, I think definitions are important so that we can start to look at, um, you know, it's part of what we talked about with the the um, the cultural competency. So that has a big place with determining whether or not, you know, rolling your eyes is something to get a referral for. We have to understand the the cultural competencies uh of each one of our students and to look at that. So I I do know that work is going on, you know, anything we can do to speed it up. And um, I think our principals are being held accountable, you know, accountable to it.
I didn't mean to imply they weren't, but what I would like to do is see principals change, school boards change, and I'd like to see our policies. I think that's something we've done a good job of for helping sustain our work is to have this
Sure.
policy.
Sure.
Otherwise, five years from now, it may not be. And that's what I I'm about, is making sure that when we're gone up here, that the work that we've done is sustainable. And we do that by by having strong policies and
I just wanted to reinforce that that work is being
Well, I didn't mean to imply that it wasn't.
No, I didn't think you did.
Okay, because I know it is, but I'd like to make their job easier. Sometimes when someone says, why are you doing this? It's required. And I think that that's where, you know, and particularly, I think in light of some of the things that are going on, you know, in the community that everyone has spoken eloquently to, I think the more things that we can memorialize that carry forward and simply say, don't give people an excuse for not doing something. So and I'm not, I think we've got the most wonderful high school principals that I've ever seen in our district and middle school. Let's give them the tool to get the job done so that they can say, hey, I have to do this. Thank you. Andrea?
Just to follow up about those definitions, I I that those definitions have been changed, the defiance and disrespect. Defiance is failure to cooperate and disrespe- or the one and the two, they're failure to cooperate and disruptive conduct, and they have different, more clear definitions to go around, go with them.
It'd just be nice if we could see what they look like.
So as an action step, why don't we run the numbers? Um, because we talked a lot about disrespect and dis- conduct, but there was a number of other key terms that were also there for you.
Right.
Fighting, drugs, um, and other incidences. We get the, we monitor these things. So I'm, I'll work on running the numbers of each of those and finding out how big that is and what that conduct looks like and bring that back to at a future. It might take us a little bit of time at a future board meeting so that the public can hear them as well. And so that can give you a better handle on how much is terminology and how much is is pretty straightforward. This is, this is a a challenge that these kids are facing here in there.
Yeah, thank you. Director Hines.
So I would support a social emotional learning policy. And I think just what we've done with the benchmark for elementary school, we said social emotional learning. We're learning Tacoma Whole Child Initiative is applicable, but we've not mandated Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. We've said social emotional learning. And I I worry that we're creating a gap if there are places in our middle school and high school where they're getting it, but there are places where they aren't. We've got a high mobility rate, so if we're using it uh elementary as the foundational piece, but we get kids that weren't here for elementary school, how are those kids calibrated? And and I, I think we've got the best teachers and administrators in the country. That's why we've driven the graduation rate up and we're having these outcomes. However, uh, it is our responsibility as board members to create the policy that governs the district. And I think there's uh an opportunity for us to better define our expectation for all schools to have a written policy in place. And I do want to see if there's disproportionality, if their teacher, it suspension to me is on a continuum. And I don't think we're ever going to take suspension or expulsion off. There are, there are times where kids come and do things at campus that requires them to leave and leave immediately. However, I want us to have multiple tools in our toolkit that allow us to correct the behavior so it doesn't happen again, because that's part of the learning process, is it's happening and we want to teach you not to do it again. And and so I think there are principles around restorative justice and empathy that help folks get out of that perspective and see somebody else's position. And I feel as a school district, we need to expect that, that just simply removing the threat immediately doesn't resolve the problem long term. And in fact, it might exacerbate the problem. So let's be really intentional with how we address it. And I think the transparency and the numbers, I I want, I want teachers to know that the school board is looking at their rate of discipline, because I want them to be accountable to us, because we are accountable to the public. So when these numbers roll out in the aggregate and we don't have specific details, we are still the ones that the community comes to and questions and and expresses concerns. We, I just, I feel like I don't have, and I'm, I'm on my soapbox, but I feel like I don't have enough information to be able to explain back why those numbers are those numbers. And that's, that's a problem.
So we can just very quickly, we can bring you more depth to the work. This is a monitoring report. So the 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 view of the monitoring report is to give you a snapshot. Um, and if the board feels it's necessary, uh, we have, we'd love to discuss uh the things that we're doing in more depth and the strategies and dive deeper into that data. Um, but we, for consistency, we we stick with the monitoring reports as the way that they are. Um, and so if that's a a work study or
It should be a study session.
We can talk to you about um the work at Gia Drone and what they're doing around suicide prevention. We can talk to you about uh the work at the Willie Stewart Academy that's working for alternatives to shorten suspensions and expulsions by providing work, working with the host school as their, the day reporting school and how their expansions. We can, we can give you a number of these strategies, as well as where we think that they're going to change the results. Uh, but that will, that is a a conversation that warrants more time than a monitoring report.
I would ask that we arrange for a study session when you have data available for us, so we can get down in there and answer some of these questions and um. Thank you. We can schedule that.
I just ask for one more thing. You said you were going to put the list together of the reasons. Um, one thing that Dr. Cabeska mentioned was look-alikes. Um, so I'm just curious if in the weapons section, the look-alikes will be, will stand out on their own or if they'll be captured in that one section. Um, I ask in particular in the elementary school world of bringing, bringing toy guns to school.
We'll be using, we, we have consistently applied the state definition for the codes. So if the state definition allows us to separate that out, we will, we can bring that out, too. Uh, if it doesn't, then we won't be able to bring that out, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item eight, consent agenda. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt.
I move adoption?
Second.
I moved in second to adopt a consent agenda. Are there any question? Uh, Jen, thank you. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Agenda is adopted. 5-0. I lost my agenda, so I'm working on old school tonight on paper. It didn't come back up on the computer, so somebody wants to come and fix it. Um, policy matters, uh, we have section nine, uh, item nine, we have policy matters. We have none. Section ten, quarterly financial update, we have none. Okay. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district's website uh at www.tacoma schools.org, financial reports. Item eleven, curriculum instruction, uh, nothing. Item twelve, item twelve-one, approval of addendum number one, interlocal agreement with Washington School Information Processing Center, uh, WASPIC. Uh, Dr. Garcia, I believe this is yours.
It is. I apologize. Now my computer's going a little haywire on me.
All right. The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services recommends the Board of Directors approves the interlocal agreement with WSIPC for the two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
Move approval.
Second.
And moved and seconded to adopt item number twelve-one. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Um, item twelve-one is adopted, five-oh. Item twelve-two, uh, approval of interlocal agreement with the Ordin Valley Fire and Rescue for Forest Management Practices at the Lincoln Tree Farm. Ms. Pace, I think this is yours.
Yes, thank you. The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve interlocal agreement with Ordin Valley Fire and Rescue to conduct controlled burns as forest management practices at the Lincoln Tree Farm.
Move approval.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve item twelve-two. Are there any uh questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, motion is adopted twelve-two, twelve, motion twelve, item twelve-two is adopted, five-oh. Thank you. Uh, item, excuse me, twelve-three, approval to enter into negotiations and enter into a contract, excuse me, I'm sorry, uh, to upgrade in fours Lawson system into the cloud. Um, which one of you is going to do this? Ms. Medina? Thank you.
The Chief Financial Officer and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends approval for the superintendent or designee to enter into negotiations with in four for the purposes of developing an addendum to the current in four contract as appropriate for consulting services for upgrading the Lawson ERP suite to version ten point oh, as well as negotiating for the realignment and adjustment of the current license and maintenance contract for moving to the cloud to operate the ERP solution.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item twelve-three. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Director Hines.
I have a question. Is the, will the contract say not to exceed eight hundred thousand? That was the number.
That's our intention.
Okay. And are there other costs? I know you, there are staff costs, but is there other technology or things that will need to be purchased?
Um, you know, I don't believe that the expectations that we would have to purchase any more equipment or materials beyond that, uh, but there would be a potential internal staff cost associated with, you know, moving people out of their regular positions to help work on this project for a period of time.
Do you have any idea how much that is?
Um, probably uh maybe less than two FTE.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, item twelve-three is adopted, five-oh. Item thirteen, other business. Item thirteen-one, approval of Washington Elementary Remedial Action VCP Grant. Mr. Mer- Commie?
The Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of a three hundred thousand dollar voluntary cleanup program grant to offset costs of mitigating the contaminated soils removed during the Washington remodel and additions project.
Move approval.
Second.
And moved and seconded to adopt item thirteen-one. Any questions or comments by members of the board? I have one comment. Would we possibly be able to apply for an a grant for Wainwright?
We have applied. Uh, we haven't, this is a voluntary cleanup program.
Right.
And so we were accepted on the DOE. I'll report back on the Wainwright project.
Okay, thank you. All right. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Uh, item thirteen-one is adopted, five-oh. Um, item thirteen-two, proclaiming January two thousand seventeen as Tacoma Whole Child Month. Mr. Who's going to do that?
Dr. Garcia.
Dr. Garcia.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Communications recommends the Board of Directors proclaim two thousand, January two thousand seventeen as Tacoma Whole Child Month and encourage community partners, municipalities, agencies, and organizations to declare their support for a whole child approach to educating and serving the children of our community.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item thirteen-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Uh, motion is adopted, and we will consider January two thousand seventeen as Whole Child Month. If the board would like, I will ask Mayor Strickland if the city will also issue proclamation as they did last year, if that's okay with everyone? Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Do we have permission to uh uh reach out to the governor's office as well?
Absolutely.
And just for those that are watching at home, the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative is not a program. It's, it's a framework around teaching social emotional, we, even local school. And this was a very clear direction by the board, the local school had to come up with their own individual plan and using data and supports and alignment to that. So um for those that are new to the experience, it's not a program that we, we come and plop down. Uh, and it's not a solely positive behavior intervention support system program. Um, so it's a framework that allows local schools to bring their own local context to that. So with your permission, thank you.
Absolutely.
We will reach out to the governor's office as well.
Great. I'll call Mr. Westbrook. I'm sure he'll take care of it. Great. All right. Moving on.
Madam President.
Yes.
One more suggestion. Metropolitan Parks District.
Absolutely.
We've got such a good partnership with them.
And I believe they actually did that last year. I think we had governor and we had the city and Metro Parks.
That would be great.
Great. Thank you. Super. All right. Report to the board. Item fourteen-one, middle school boundary adjustment recommendations. Ms. Medina?
Good evening. I'll start out by apologizing for my voice. I have a cold. I've been spending too much time with ill people.
Stay away, please. And I cannot, it's getting over the morning. I do not want another one.
So I apologize for that. Uh, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening about the work, the boundary committee. It has been a long haul, and it's never an easy process to change the lives of families, but uh we've worked really hard and we've been very diligent in the work that we've done. Back in June of this year, the board provided us with a charge, a committee charge, and asked us to develop new boundaries that balance enrollment across both our new and surrounding middle school locations. Our new location was set for Hunt Middle School, which will open in September of two thousand twenty-one, as well as all of the other middle schools in the current um getting ready to go for the seventeen eighteen year. Uh, additional charge items were to consider the smallest number of families and our impacts to provide families with the option to delay their move.
to provide families with the option to delay their moving, to consider the, the impacts in special populations such as, uh, homeless youth education, special education programs and English language learners, and to consider the ways to maintain diverse populations within each schools and to establish boundaries that would be relatively stable for the foreseeable future. Uh, we did that through a process, uh, that has been approved by you and was also used in our prior boundary process for Whittier Wainwright Elementary School, uh, adjustment that we did last year. That process required us to start by creating a district proposal, and that was done by a technical team internal to the district where we gave the, the Boundary Committee a starting point, a jumping off point, uh, based on our recommendations. Uh, that committee was formed in September. It was created based on having two parent representatives from each middle school area, as well as a principal from each middle school area. We opened it up beyond just the middle school parents and said elementary school parents could also participate. Uh, that committee went ten times over the course of three months, uh, and we participated in an iterative process. They took the springboard proposal, they identified the deficiencies in that proposal, they broke apart, um, boundary areas and worked in different clusters of groups to identify what would make the most sense and then came back to, as a collective, and voted on the, the process. We then expressed all of that out to community and feedback forums. Uh, we had two public preview feedback forums as well as a formal public hearing. Uh, beyond that, we intend to finalize our recommendations after our last committee meeting, which will be November thirtieth. We thought we were finished. We actually re, we fin, we had cake. I shouldn't have done it. I knew I shouldn't have done it. It was the cake that did it for us. But, um, we had our last meeting and we'll be bringing the committee back together in light of the communication that we've had out at the Sherman School. Uh, and that'll be on the thirtieth of November with the expectation that we would be able, after that meeting, to hopefully make some recommendations to our superintendent, uh, and bring to you formal adoption on December eighth. That says December ninth, but it's actually December eighth. Some of the community outreach that we've done, um, uh, we, we worked on recruiting our, our committee volunteers. Uh, we had some committee discussion and public feedback, and we're, uh, working then towards doing post-committee notifications. We use a variety of communication strategies for each phase. We did custom and general recorded phone calls, messages, and emails uh, to keep district families informed of the committee's work and the proposed changes. We also, uh, had the one issue with the Sherman site where, uh, the, the late change, it was the last change that the committee made, and it was done just a few days before the public hearing, and so they didn't feel that they had, uh, expressed, uh, they didn't feel that they had a chance to express their opinions about the, the change in advance of the public hearing or even after the public hearing. Uh, additionally, there was the viewer issue where they couldn't actually see it. Um, after the school board does make action on the recommendations, at whatever point that is, we will work with public information offices as well as enrollment services to develop communication strategies around the optional enrollment process, what changes are upcoming, and what the transitioning options are for each individual student affected. I wanted to go through briefly with you what the impacts are. These are the current recommendations of the Boundary Committee as of their last meeting on December or November fifteenth, fourteenth, Tuesday. It was Tuesday the fourteenth. Um, the first, the first is, uh, First Creek. And what you see are the boundaries along the outside in the dot, in the blue. Uh, the solid color is the current boundary, and the hash line would be what is being either added or removed from that school's current boundary. Uh, for First Creek, they'll have a hundred and ninety-five students shifting to Stewart in the seventeen-eighteen year. Uh, that'll bring the recommended program capacity, which is what percentage of students in the catchment area would be attending the maximum capacity of that school, uh, down from a hundred and twenty-one percent of nine hundred and six students to ninety-four point eight percent, uh, proposing a hundred, uh, seven hundred and eleven students in the seventeen-eighteen year. This is a, a well-deserved and well-needed change for the First Creek area. They've been a little overloaded for a number of years now. And with Stewart having moved to Hunt, uh, we believe that a number of students have moved into, moved into the First Creek area. With the opening of Stewart, reopening of Stewart in seventeen, uh, we'll see on the right-hand side that a hundred and ninety-five students will shift from First Creek to Stewart. Uh, on the left-hand side, uh, seventy-six Stewarts will sh, seventy-six students will shift from Stewart to Jodroni. And then on the lower end of the, the southern end of the boundary, we'll have thirty-eight students shift from Baker. Uh, from Stewart to Baker. Uh, Jodroni will have just the students shifting in from Stewart to Jodroni. Uh, that'll bring Jodroni up from seventy-nine percent of the recommended program capacity to eighty-two percent. Uh, a target for us is generally eighty-five percent. We try to meet that as best we can. Uh, we wanna also look at, uh, demographic information of a school, um, safe pathways to school. I don't know, what else am I thinking of? Nothing? Okay. We looked at a number of factors. For Baker Middle School in seventeen-eighteen, they would only be impacted by the shift of students from Stewart into Baker, and that would bring their enrollment from eighty-five percent of recommended program capacity up to ninety percent. So still within the, um, normal range of the school. Beginning in twenty-one-twenty-two, uh, this would be the implementation of Hunt. We would create a Hunt boundary. The Hunt boundary we brought back from the, when Hunt was available when it closed, i- it wasn't enough students to really populate the school. So we started to make some adjustments. Uh, we brought in a hundred and twenty-five students from Mason in addition to three hundred and eighty-five students from the Hunt area, or from the, excuse me, from the Truman area. That'll put them in a recommended program capacity at school opening in two thousand twenty-one of eighty-one and a half percent. Truman, which is currently at a hundred and twenty-one percent of the recommended program capacity, would it, would, uh, have three hundred and sixty-five students shift from Truman into Hunt and then bring in the seventy-one students from Mason. And that would put them at seventy-four point four percent recommended program capacity. And finally, Mason, uh, they would have s, a hundred and twenty-six students shift from Mason to Hunt and seventy-one students shift from Mason to Truman and bringing them to a seventy-three percent capacity. We would also honor our optional enrollment process, which is a, a champ, we are a champion of that, which would allow students to optionally enroll into that school as well.
There's quite, there's quite a bit of room.
There would be quite a bit of room in the future, yes. That's true. Based on the transition recommendations, these were developed, it's very similar, the seventeen-eighteen and the twenty-one-twenty-two recommendations. These were developed by the committee. They were modeled after what we did for the Whittier-Wainwright process. It would allow students currently entering in the, the eighth grade in the seventeen-eighteen year to remain at their school so that they wouldn't have to shift their last year to a new school. Seventh graders that would be coming in would be allowed to optional enroll and would have priority, uh, with transportation provided. Excuse me. The recommendations of the committee, uh, they heard a lot of feedback regarding the McCarver boundaries, uh, the McCarver IB program. And since this was a recommendation of the committee, they wanna be able to provide McCarver students the ability to attend Jodroni with transportation provided. Additionally, the district will, uh, work to communicate with families immediately after. They wanted a, a five-day working, five-working day notification. Within five working days of your approval, we need to let families know what these changes are impacting their, their students. And finally, having clear boundary maps available online, uh, providing IUP teams with the ability to make placement decis, decisions for students with special needs, which is really no different than our current process, but they wanted to call that out so that families were aware. And then finally, working on the safe walking and bicycling routes for students. Uh, our next steps would include whatever feedback we have from you tonight, uh, if any. On December thirtieth, we will definitely be reconvening the committee so that they can have further conversation uh, around any recommendations or changes that they may wanna make.
November thirtieth, accurate.
Did I say?
December.
Yeah, uh, in November.
Just wanna make sure those that are listening at home that want, have the right date, November thirtieth.
Thank you. Fading fast. On December eighth, we would seek board approval, and on December fourteenth, it would be our expectation, provided that you approved our recommendations, that we would distribute communications. The optional enrollment process does close on January fifteenth. So that was the intention of the timeline that we had and, and closing it out in December so that we had, uh, appropriate enough to, time to communicate to families.
So the, the dates for the Sherman, uh, families to give feedback would be?
Right. Uh, I do wanna say that all information is available on our district website at www.tacomaschools.org slash boundaries.
Okay.
Uh, there's still an opportunity for feedback. I would expect feedback to come before November thirtieth. That would be an optimal time so that we can use that in consideration at our last committee meeting. Um, and that they can make those feedback, any feedback, uh, on the district website at the boundaries. There's a Q and A section where families can insert their comments there and send communications off to us.
So I know that you met, um, you had a pretty impromptu meeting for the Sherman parents tonight. And does it make sense to have another opportunity for them to come together to give feedback?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
And, um, you know, just to say that the, the work of the committee, I think, was, you know, they're a very responsible group, and I am so proud of the work that they did, uh, so proud of them for the work that they did. I'd really do anything. They are a dedicated group of people. They showed up to the meetings, they participated in the process, they actively participated in the process. They shared their comments, their concerns. Um, they represented the families well, uh, despite the fact that there are those that, um, are dismayed by the process. Uh, I do feel that there was a valuable, uh, activity that was performed by the committee that, that did participate, so. I just wanna say that and, you know, thank them for all the work that they did. Thank you.
Thank you. Good report. Um, good work too. You're always not going to make everybody happy, but I just have a couple of comments. My main comment is, as I looked at across where the boundary adjustments that are made and at the numbers, at the size of the middle schools will be, um, I think it's been, you, the committee did a great job. For me, it's equity. We've had over-enrolled schools and under-enrolled schools. And what this does is make our middle schools smaller. And I think we've heard from the community, at least I have, a lot, from a lot of parents the last couple of years, that our middle schools are too big, several of them. And now I think making them, you know, equitable across the district in size, what this basically does, uh, gives our, our class, class sizes being smaller, which is one thing we've wanted, and makes a, for, I think, a very equitable distribution of kids. Also, I think the Hunt boundaries are excellent, included area that had been left out before. Over on the, the side where it's actually in University Place, the City of University Place. Uh, I think the committee did a very, very good job. I say we'll never always make everyone happy, and if we're really looking at equity, I think of size, uh, and distribution, I think the committee did an excellent job. And that's all, you know, I have to say, and thank you, and we'll see what, if you come back with any further revisions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
I was gonna ask about seeing clearer maps, but instead I went to tacoma hub at schools dot org slash boundaries and found maps that I can expand and look at. Um, I'm liking what I'm seeing in terms of following major corridors and making sure the transportation routes. We're always gonna be concerned about some of those crossings, so as we get there, um, I know that we're currently looking at it, so it'll be, uh, important to make sure that we're keeping safety first. I know, I'm, I'm looking at First Creek because it's the middle school that's closest to my house and I'm most familiar with it. And I know that they've been, um, pretty booked for a long time, so they're gonna be relieved to make sure kids are thriving someplace slightly different. Still have. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so, um, yeah, I do think it's great to relieve, um, First Creek of, um, the population, and I think people are gonna be really excited to go to, um, Stewart, so it's not gonna be a hardship. I'm hoping that we will grandfather people in though if they wanna stay, uh, in the schools, and it might be a couple of years till we really sort things out. I, I, I had a question because I did go to the, one of the hea, uh, hearings, and it was on the boundary with, um, Jason, Mason. It was really close to Jason Lee, and you even went by Jason Lee before you got to Mason. So I don't know what that boundary is, uh, towards the freeway, what that line is.
Um, well, let's see if we can find that here. So I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, so here's Mason, here's Jason Lee, and we were taking a section over here and then sending him to Mason instead of sending him to Jason Lee, which was closer. It seemed.
So the only impact on Mason is to, um, shift students to Hunt and shift tr, students to Truman. Jason Lee's boundary doesn't actually change.
Okay.
Um, at all.
Did you adjust that since the hearings or not? Cause I was looking at, and maybe you did.
No, there wasn't, uh, not since the public hearing, the formal public hearing.
Okay.
Um, but there were presentations that were done, um, in the public preview where they did have that as a scenario.
Oh, okay. And maybe that's what I saw.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, the assum, what are the assumptions, um, for Wainwright on Hunt?
So currently, um, Mason, I'm sorry, Wainwright has the ability to either go to Truman or go to Gray for a comprehensive option. We would then shift that to Hunt or Gray for a comprehensive option.
So my co, uh, I know my, um, concern is, do we have solid numbers? Like, who would go to Hunt? Or, you know, maybe the Hunt numbers would be lower.
Uh, we did factor in the Wainwright students and tried to back those out so that we were taking an accurate count.
Okay. And, um, when I look at, um, hear the people from Sherman, I don't really like the idea of disenfranchising an entire school and, um, dividing them in half and, uh, we have done that to other middle schools, so that's where I stand on that issue. I just, uh, it was a concern when I heard the parents' concerns.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
Director Kong?
It was helpful to be reminded of the charge of the group in the beginning, but it's not specifically called out there. But in the special, special populations consideration or in the diverse populations consideration, did we look at, um, did you all look at the impact, the projected impact on the percentage of free reduced price lunch students at schools?
Yes.
In particular, do you have a sense of what happens with the First Creek boundary change?
I do. I have that right here. So First Creek's free and reduced lunch population. Well, I thought I had it right here. I think I might have to get that to you. I apparently don't have it right here. Oh, yes, I do. I have it right here. Um, so, um, in the current, in the current proposed boundaries, it's at eighty-two percent.
Is that what? Say it again.
Eighty-two percent. And under the seventeen-eighteen proposed boundaries, it will go to eighty-three point three. So it goes up one point three percent.
Do you know what Stewart's looks like?
Yes. Can find that easier. Uh, the Stewart's free and reduced lunch percentage currently is at sixty-nine point six percent. Uh, it will increase to seventy-three point six percent, so four percentage points. But I would, I would caution that with, you know, they have such a small population at their current school, um, that when they grow to a bigger population, it changes the demographics considerably, you know, in relationship to that.
Economy is a scale issue.
Right.
Director Heinz?
Yeah, a couple of questions with the, I, I've heard a couple of people say eighty-five percent, fifteen percent in terms of how you trim it. Is that a methodology or?
No, I think it's not intentionally and not by us. No, wasn't a methodology in past boundary adjustments years and years ago, perhaps, but not that I'm aware of.
And, and how does, with respect to the Sherman issues raised, how does that compare to other catchment areas in the city? We can't ever make a hundred percent of the people happy, but we can try to be fair and equitable.
Correct. So one of the things, and, and I think that that's really something that the committee needs to get back together and look at, is specifically that question. Um, I think that, and, and that, and, you know, the fact that I'm, as a pa, as a student, I may go to three different peer group schools, you know, is a concern in separating that out. Um, I, I think that most of our elementary schools are split over catchment. There are very few that are actually where the entire school population goes to a particular middle school. A, and it's similar in the highs and the middle schools. The middle schools have a lot of splits between which high schools they go to. Um, so I think that it's a factor and that it needs to be evaluated. Uh, but it, it was certainly considered in the conversation that we had, but, you know, we have new information. We probably need to consider it again.
Okay, and that would be helpful to have prior, for, for our consideration prior to having to make a decision.
Great.
To have that big picture of school districts. Did the Sherman folks, I heard more time. Have they specified how much more time and with what they want to do with that time?
Um, they didn't say necessarily what they wanted to do with the time. Uh, my understanding was that they just wanted more time to advocate and that the time that they asked for was perhaps a week and a half.
Okay.
That was a one number that was thrown out by one parent.
How do we handle siblings?
Currently, we, through our regular optional enrollment process, try to grandf, or grandfather's the wrong terminology, but we try to consider families with siblings first so that they have better priority in getting into a school for optional enrollment. Because we don't, we want to keep families together. That's important to us.
Yeah, and I heard a recurring theme with the folks from Sherman and I know in our family and I'm assuming consistent throughout the district is when you've got those two, three, four kids, you would like them all to go to the same school. So, as we're thinking through the numbers, like us to have, if there's a policy or just some way to have consistency?
We do have a policy on how we provide those optional enrollments. I don't know if moving somebody in based on their sibling attending is part of our policy or not. I would have to ask Sandra Jacobson that. What I would add to that is that the concern was by parents whose, you know, oldest or might be out of the school by the time their next one is coming in and they wouldn't have that sibling.
Yes.
Relationship.
You did talk with them about, you know, that, that there will be a grandfather clause for?
We talked about grandfathering and they've offered some suggestions as to what that could look like.
Two more items. One, is it possible on the, where we've got the table that shows the school and the current population and the proposed scenario to drop in what the demographer predicts so we can see where we are?
So, are, if we see these sheets, have you seen these sheets?
I'm just looking at the.
What's on the here? Okay.
Is it in the presentation?
It's, gosh, I don't know. I'm so sorry. I don't know if it's, I do, it's not in the actual presentation.
I don't think it's in the slide deck.
It was additional information.
We have that information because I was worried about that too.
Yeah, we have the additional information that shows what the recommended, what the, what it looks like in 2020 and 2025.
Yeah, that would be great. So, that's, we have that somewhere.
It is on the district website, but I'll make sure that you get your own copy of it. I apologize.
Okay. And then my last question is just around the, the timeframe.
Yes.
So, we are, I don't know if we're doing ourselves any favors by what feels like a compressed period of time to solicit community input that coincides with holidays. So, we say, we've had this meeting and I really have tried to be, to try to honor the process and to sequester myself from any information so that the recommendation now is when I'm going to start vetting. I haven't said, I haven't gone to any of the events. I haven't looked at anything. I haven't talked to anybody because I wanted the committee to come forward with their work. So, I'm feeling squeezed, let alone community members that are just hearing this for the first time. And, and boundary, I mean, President Viall nailed it. This is a never a fun or easy process. It's necessary and I want to make certain we get it right. And when I look to see that you're going to come to us for approval on the eighth, but we've got Thanksgiving weekend and we have extended vacation for our kids and families this week. So, tomorrow's the last day of school and they've got the long weekend. It just, that part feels abbreviated and then we're going to make the decision on the eighth of December. And on the fourteenth of December, we're going to distribute communications on school, but that's going to come right up against the winter break. And then we're going to come back from that and optional enrollment closes on January fifteenth. It just, it feels really compressed.
The driver has been that January fifteenth because that is the date that we need to have, you know, the forms out and people ready in order to get kids in the right school. So, that's the only day, and, you know, we can back up from there and see what additional time there is, but January fifteenth is the driver date.
Okay.
I feel compressed and I can already, I can hear the phone calls and the emails coming saying, I mean, I, so we, let's say best case scenario, because you've said a week and a half for the Sherman folks and then we need to see how, how those adjustments might potentially impact the other catchment areas. And then you got to notify people, we have to take action because I, I really appreciate. I had a couple of emails on this issue before we came to the meeting tonight and I really appreciate and value the community input. It just, are we going to give people enough time to offer us input for us to deliberate and then for us to communicate out so that people can meet the January fifteenth deadline?
So.
So, January fifteenth is, 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 is a firm deadline. Sandra needs it in order to do the work. So, it's, I think it is fortunate that it's Sherman. So, everyone, everyone else has had.
I wonder and I, I shudder to even throw it out there, but, you know, there's.
You shudder.
I shudder. I'm shuddering now. The seventeen, eighteen is what is driving the December, right?
Twenty-first, talking about twenty-one, twenty-two.
The issues that are really being brought forth right now are in relationship to the changes happening in twenty-one, twenty-two, five years from now. And so, you know, the immediacy around those changes, I suppose, isn't as significant as what's out for seventeen, eighteen. We want to be able to give families all the information that they can to make an optional enrollment choice for their families. That's the right choice for them and we want to be able to do that pretty quickly. I am not hearing any level of concern from seventeen, eighteen. The, it wasn't a late change. It wasn't a big process change.
You've had plenty of time for, for community input.
I, I really feel that that's true. And I think that the circumstances surrounding what happened with the Sherman community was unfortunate. And we do want to, you know, honor what the, the concerns were that brought, that were brought forth. And so, could we separate those out and, and maybe hold off the twenty-one, twenty-two to January?
Can you give us just a couple of options of calendars for our consideration to see if we might be able to do that?
Well, if I might comment, I think it is primarily the Sherman because I've had discussions once and the Carver parents understood what we were going to do with why they wanted to go to Giadroni for the IB thread. And I had that conversation and that went away. My neighborhood, which is very much impacted by this with the reopening of Hunt, were very happy, particularly those new neighbors with little kids to know that Hunt will be reopening and there will be a comprehensive middle school. So, I think this is an isolated one for us. It's this small pocket of Sherman parents. Not diminishing their concerns, but I think that's the only one really we have to deal with. I've heard Eastside parents say, you know, now they're back with Stewart and everybody's excited about the new Stewart and feeding back into that. And so, I think, I think that's the only probably issue. Rosalyn, is that pretty correct right now from what you've heard?
It is correct. And one way that we did outreach that I think that was really unique, for the seventeen, eighteen parents, we called, we, we separated out every student that was impacted, every family that was impacted, and we gave them a personalized message that said, this is, you're having a boundary meeting. We're having a presentation. You will be impacted. Your specific school will change from this school to that school and please come and have your voices heard for the seventeen, eighteen group. So, there was a different level of communication. We didn't know necessarily. We can't identify all the families that will necessarily be impacted for twenty-one, twenty-two. So, we didn't lay, lay out that level of communication either.
So, so Rosalyn, what kind of changes, I mean, so we're saying it's twenty-one, twenty-two. If we don't make decisions about this boundary by, you know, our deadline to meet the January fifteenth, we would, there would be an opportunity to make changes for, you know, to reconsider and look at the boundary? I mean, it just seems to me that that's going to affect seventeen, eighteen too. Not necessarily?
I, I don't think that what we're talking about for twenty-one, twenty-two will have the impact. I mean, and I'm happy to separate them out, but I feel, I really feel to put, putting a delay on the seventeen, eighteen would put us in a position where we're detrimenting families as opposed to helping them.
Well, I know in, in the, you know, the Hunt catchment area which I live in, that twenty-one, twenty-two is a big factor for a lot of new families knowing that they won't have to send their kids over to UP primarily for middle school. So, I, I would hope that we don't go fiddle around with that too much because, you know, that's still a pretty sore point up in parts of Furcrass, my neighborhood, the Long neighborhood about not having the closure of Hunt still stings, to be honest. And about not having a comprehensive middle school and the kids have to take a pretty long bus ride to Truman or to Mason. Or a number on my side have gone down to University Place Middle School. And I'd sure love to have them come back to our school district. So, I would ask, just from that perspective, that we, you know, settle on that twenty, twenty-one and don't go play with that particularly for that Hunt catchment area.
So, can Rosalyn and I go offline and just, you know, look at dates and figure out what we have? And because to me, we should be able to figure out a time to adequately give Sherman parents an opportunity to, you know, give input, get that, you know, get that in and still not, you know, not disrupt the, the entire process. We're really talking about one family, I mean, one school group that needs this input. It'd be different if it was going to impact three or four schools. So, let us take that back and then if we can just, I'll call you and say, here's the plan, you know, with the handout that says, here's where we're going to get that, we'll get it blessed by, you know, get, get Sherman, the Sherman principal to look at it. The problems with this has just been it was, it happened late and there just wasn't enough adequate time for, for them to get information and to be able to even construct what their concerns were. So, let's give that to them.
And we've created a timeline now where there is no, this is our last board meeting in November and the next board meeting is December eighth when you would like us to take action. So, there is no more public comment period for families. So.
And, and we, we can remedy that. I mean, there's nothing that says we can't come together, you know, and do something before, you know, you know, put it into the process. So, let us look at it and see what we can do.
And I blame the premature cake.
Yeah, it's totally the cake. If I hadn't done that cake, I think everything would have been just fine.
I'd just like to make a comment. When my students, my children were in school, I think that date was even the end of February for open enrollment. You know, January fifteenth, it's not even halfway through the school year and they're already making plans for eight months later. And I, I don't know if it's in the mind of some parents and that early. You know, I think it's quite a, you know, the date to me could be stretched out a few weeks without harm.
Maybe it's something we can consider in the future, but we got everybody cooking on this one shoulder. It's too late to change that now.
Can I ask one follow-up question?
Yes.
About this, I made a mistake in the very beginning of our conversation about the Sherman challenge. Why was this decision made so late? Was it about the number of kids? Was it, was there another option on the table? What was the flip?
Yeah, the, the real reasoning was just working through all of the numbers and making sure that schools were balanced. So, they came back together after the last, I don't know, whatever meaningful meeting it was and recognized that they had one school that was at seventy percent, one that was at eighty-five and one that was at, you know, seventy-five. And so, they wanted to make sure that they were balancing those appropriately. And they looked to identify different components of what that balancing might look like.
I think it's also important to note that the public, there's been a public process all along. And so, the straw design approach, the committee takes public feedback. And in this situation, there was a piece that just wasn't caught early. But the public's been involved and had opportunities to provide feedback prior to getting to you and that was the process you, you approved because we did that also in the elementary schools. No process is perfect, but it's designed specifically to get that engagement and those perceptions early, those viewpoints so that whatever proposal is brought to you is in consideration of those.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay. And now, board comments and reports. Director Hines, I'll start with you.
An opportunity to attend the WASDA conference, Washington State School Directors Association conference last week. And it was with great pride that I sat and watched our own superintendent and Dan Bopel present on telling the story. And they presented in front of a packed room and did a fantastic job representing us. Lots of good questions asked, lots of, I, I think we got people thinking about something that maybe they've not otherwise thought about, that we get so busy doing the work of educating kids, we forget to stop and engage the community and tell the story. So, thank you for representing us well.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
And thank you for your, for your presentation. And then last week had an opportunity to attend the Safe Routes to School. So, I serve on the School Traffic Safety Committee on behalf of the board, which is a joint committee with Tacoma Public School Personnel and the City of Tacoma. They have an engineering person. They have the person from the police department that leads the motor units, the traffic safety. About a year ago, President Viall and I met with Mayor Strickland and Councilmember Toms on this issue. And the Safe Routes is going to put out a report that I think will help us to very intentionally make investments in safety infrastructure, will better define what sort of enforcement and education is needed. And it allows us to be less reactive. It's always terrible when a child is struck and that Halloween accident was, affected a family in the whole community and, and it shaken that school. And we want to make certain that we're really intentional with where we invest those sorts of resources so that we can protect the most people. And I, I think there's opportunity to do a, a public education campaign. So, at that Safe Routes to School open house last week, it was attended by King Five, Q thirteen, the TNT was there. I think we have such a great communications department that reminding drivers how to be safe drivers and not just around schools, but around where kids and families congregate. Like sometimes we think about schools up at school hours. We have them six and a half hours a day, a hundred and eighty days a year. We're building these beautiful facilities where they're being used after hours. And in the summertime, we still want people to be responsible around those areas, so educating the drivers. And then the pedestrians, and I've got my middle schooler sitting out there in the audience and we talk all the time when you're walking home from school, look up every once in a while. Take in your surroundings, make eye contact with the driver before you cross the street, cross at marked intersections because he's catching Pokemon or Instagramming or listening to music. And so, I think there is, it's not just the responsibility of the driver. We have an opportunity to educate all thirty thousand of our kids and kids are powerful. They take that information home to their parents and their neighborhood and remind people to be responsible pedestrians as well. And, and I don't see this as an isolated school district issue. I think this is a City of Tacoma-led initiative where we can be a valued partner. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Cobb?
No comment tonight.
Thank you. Director Winscoe?
I, no comment tonight.
I would just like to ask that everybody celebrate this holiday weekend in the way that you most find comfortable with your loved ones or whatever and be safe and enjoy it. Moments that we have are, are few in the end and I hope they're all enjoyed. That's it.
Thank you. I want to thank Director Hines for filling in for me at WASDA for an accepting award because for illness I was unable to, to attend. I received a letter and I'm going to give it to Superintendent Santoro to distribute out to staff regarding our staff and how much help they were for a regional conference of ASCD. And it was very complimentary and I think down to some of the secretarial staff and so on. And just said, thank you for Tacoma Public Schools doing such a wonderful, great job and with Dr. Rahar and everyone in the staff. So, I'm going to get, send it to Superintendent Santoro and ask her to deliver it to everyone. John Taylor, Dave Davis, they're all of our people. And it just makes you proud when you get a letter like that, that tells us what high-quality staff we have and, and the job that they do. And this is something that's above and beyond. So, that's all I have. And also, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And do I dare say, go Cougs?
Yeah, Director Garcia says I do. Okay, anyway.
But particularly, be safe. Announcement of future board meetings, you know, chair prerogative, I get to do that. December, December eighth, two thousand sixteen, five o'clock study session, six o'clock regular meeting. January two thousand seventeen, Thursday, January twelfth, two thousand seventeen, six o'clock regular meeting. Thursday, January nineteenth, six o'clock study session. And Thursday, January twenty-sixth, regular meeting at six o'clock here. We, item seventeen, we do have an executive session. General counsel, how much time? Fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Okay. The board will meet an executive session for approximately sixteen, or fifteen minutes with legal counsel to review collective bargaining proposals. The board will adjourn to executive session. Thank you.